Good. Absent with regrets.
I think a motion, your worship, if we excuse Counselor Dennis from this meeting today. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions, folks?
Your worship, maybe a little overview from yourself, and I see we have Frank was, Frank is here, and I don't think Todd is here, both the meeting we had with the military last week.
Yes.
And maybe with Jeff, maybe we had a meeting with the EMO from Yarmouth Town and Municipality, and with Argyle, maybe just a little brief discussion on what happened the other night. I think it was a very productive meeting. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, Wade's gonna be a-
It's okay. It's the location. Your worship, thank you. I have a couple of items from communities in Bloom I'd like to bring up as well.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, with- Thank you. Moved and seconded discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. You can put your light on. Linda, put his light on. Okay.
Dog by law.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
All right, you're good.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, give us the light on. Good. All right, we should probably start with, start with a moment of silence, everyone, in light of the events of this week. Thank you, folks. And just so everybody, I think I sent a note out, but for folks out here, the funeral's tomorrow morning at 11:00 at the Wesleyan Church, and 7:00 to 9:00 this evening, visitation and 8:00 o'clock prayers. All right, staff reports, CAO. Go ahead.
Your worship, the, my report is attached for your information. If there are any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Good. Fire department report. Welcome, chief.
This is, oh, chief.
Put your light, can I have your light?
What's the story on the new fire truck?
Right now, it looks like in the spring, and it's been looked at, and there's a scale of it at the fire department posted, so they can see it, and we're just waiting to hear from there.
Good.
Thank you. Operational, Chad.
My report's also attached, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Chad, as far as the new bus coming online, what's the, go ahead and tell me it's already out there, but what's the status?
Yeah, we received the bus approximately two weeks ago. We had a few minor issues with some non-compliance issues with the tender. Those are being addressed. Received Nova Scotia MBI yesterday. We just need to transfer the card reader system over from the old bus, and could be online as early as the end of next week, but more realistically, probably the middle of December.
How many people using the card system, Chad?
It's still, it's around 50/50. I don't have hard numbers for you, but, yeah, 50/50.
I think-
Thank you. Oh, somebody has their light on. Oh. Go ahead, Jim and then Phil.
I was just going to ask Chad, the new bus, when it's in operation, if something happens to that for whatever the reason, we hope it doesn't, is the old bus, the current bus, going to be usable?
Yes, actually, we're probably gonna keep the old bus in service, maybe run it a day, day and a half, a week.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
No, the old bus has been running quite well, especially since we received the new bus.
Yeah. The ridership numbers, as I look at them, 14, 937 to the end of, well, to the end of October. So we should be equal to what we had last year, 17, 355 by the time the year ends.
We're trending up. Last three months have probably been our best three months since we started the service.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, and the new bus will have a little more capacity. The new bus has standing capacity as well, so we could take up to 21 passengers at a time.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Good. Any better on fuel, or is it, I wonder?
We don't know. Probably the same.
Yeah, probably the same.
The new bus is about three feet longer, maybe a little bit heavier, so fuel consumption might be a little bit better.
Yeah. Thanks, Chad.
Yep.
Glad they're standing capacity, because the time I tried to get on the bus, it's a funny story, but I got on, I had some tickets, because we had visitors from out of town that wanted to check out the bus system, and there was a lady sitting in the front seat, and she yelled as loud as she could, "Doesn't matter if you're the mayor, you still can't stand up on this bus." So they, it's really neat, like, they know the rules and they're helpful to each other. It was good. So I'm glad to hear that they're standing capacity.
Yeah, and just being at the Federation of Nova Scotia Municipalities last week or the week before, a couple of weeks ago, kind of realized how important our transit system was to the community when they're talking about seniors and infrastructure and getting people around the community. But I talked to somebody the other day, Chad, and they're still talking a little bit about the bus route, and I asked them, I know we had the card system in there, and I think one of the original reasons we put the card system is to see where the biggest traffic areas are, and I asked the person how, what they, if they put paid or if they used the card system, they said they paid, I said, "Maybe you should start using the card system," and, you know, because they use it all the time.
Yeah.
And it might show up in the numbers where the stops are, and you might have a better argument to, I think they wanted to come in, I think, off of Myrtle Avenue, like another 100 yards or something-
Oh, really?
-to go in front of Sankey Manor, but I said, "Maybe use the card, might help you out a little bit." But I think that was, that was both the only concern I've had over the last year, is just maybe just that one little tweak. I know one out on the Haley Road, or out on Ellis Road, but I know it's hard to do the loop in that specified time, but hopefully, like you said, it's trending up and it keeps on going, so, thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
So we are on the operational services report, or are we still on transit?
The same, yeah.
So Chad, the asphalt repaver is going to be kept going, you're going to be doing patching. I had a call about a cut you made on Argyle Street, and there's concern about when that might get done, covered, because it's a busy street, and there's concern about, you know, the possibility of an accident arising-
Yeah.
-if that thing isn't fixed. When do you think maybe, I know it's weather dependent, but-
Yeah, well, the paving season hasn't ended yet, so the contractor is still doing work for us, so that's slated for next week.
So something like the next week or two weeks that should get done?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
We good?
Chad, on your report regarding the compost facility, you indicate that we were able to process and produce, I guess, 6,000 cubic yards of certified Class A compost?
We're, well, we're still waiting for some test results, because we have to, I think, test for, we have to have one test for every thousand cubic yard, so we haven't received all the test results back yet, but every indication is we'll have 6,000 cubic yards of certified Class A.
Okay, and have you sold, sold much compost this year?
No, no, I can get some numbers for you, but we haven't sold any significant quantities.
But 6,000 yards, if that does become certified, will be a lot of compost for sale? Would that be more than we typically sell in a year?
Yeah, yes.
So we'll have good supply that we can promote in the spring?
Perfect.
Yeah, we really need to promote that. Go ahead, Wade.
Chad, just checking on all of the inspections that are done this time of year as things turn into winter. Have you had a chance to look over blown-out streetlights yet?
Yeah, excuse me, the transportation supervisor did a streetlight audit approximately a week ago, so we have a list that we have to forward to our contractor.
Okay, do you have enough to get them all done?
Yeah.
Okay.
We typically, the contractor's based out of New Brunswick, so it's hard, we can't really justify getting them to mobilize for one streetlight, so-
Of course.
Five's usually the magic number. We're still under a maintenance contract with the original installer from the 2015 LED streetlight conversion.
How many blown lights are we looking at, or do you know right off the bat?
There's four or five, and some of the decorative street lamps on Water Street as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead, Cliff.
So a follow-up on Chad's answer to the CAO. So I think from what you said is a portion, a portion of it has been sampled and certified.
Right.
And you're waiting for the rest of it to be done, and you hope that if it follows suit with what was already done, that the whole lot will be certified. And is it Class A or B, is it?
Class A.
Class A compost, amazing. So that was done with a portable screener, was it?
Yeah, we had, despite the wet conditions, we had some success with the screener this year, but the staff actually re-screened material that we'd screened in the past, and the contaminant levels seem to be, seem to be down this year, for whatever reason. We do have some Class B on site as well. Some of the material we screened from Lake George a couple of years ago would be a Class B material, so we need to find a use for that, perhaps on site. We're working with the solid waste park.
And that's on the three mil standard?
Yeah.
So going forward, the other question I'd have is, is this portable screener a different portable screener than the one we have used in the past?
No, no, this is-
Same portable screener?
This is, no, sorry, this is a different one that we sourced. The one we're using this year is different than we've sourced in the past.
It's interesting that we couldn't make the standard three years ago, and we can now. I'm curious as to maybe if there's an explanation for that. Is it just the weather conditions, or is it just doing-
Perhaps, yeah, we haven't figured out-
Are they using a different, a different screen, or the-
No, the screen sizes are pretty much the same, yeah.
Well, the good news is it's passing.
Yeah.
Doesn't explain why it didn't pass three years ago, that's all. Thank you.
Chad, what about the bagger? Are we gonna use the bagger?
The bagger? No, we haven't, we haven't, I think they tested the bagger a few years ago, shortly after they purchased it, but I think they had some issues with sourcing the proper bag for the material and getting the moisture content, and there were some labeling requirements that we couldn't meet, but I really wasn't part of the discussion.
Okay. Maybe we can look into that, Jeff, maybe? Okay.
Go ahead, Don.
For the general public, is there a list out there what they can use this compost for? Like, you know what I mean, and a price list? I mean, if we're gonna try to sell something to just a common person, then I wouldn't believe, you know, my choices of how I could use this stuff to be beneficial for me-
Yeah, we-
-and my cost.
We, I think there's one price, there's one price, there's no, there's no price based on volume. But we did circulate a compost brochure three or four years ago to help promote the product. We could maybe look at recirculating that again, or at least hand it out when we do sell the material.
Yeah.
Good folks? Thanks, Chad. Okay, planning. So, um, so I see this first page, I was just a little bit mixed up, the first page is completed there. You want to share that with me? So all these are done, these are just, maybe I can sit with them, like, because I don't want to ask too many questions, but, you know, I don't know what that is. And they're starting those things, so maybe just wait.
Yeah, absolutely, that shouldn't be.
Yeah. I didn't think so. Okay, good, anything, any questions there? We're good, we can always reach out. All right, asset management, infrastructural renewer report. That's Charles.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your worship. I trust that my report was circulated there for everybody?
Yeah. Just give us one second here. Go ahead, Jim.
Charles, I have a couple of questions. The paving that we have just completed on Monday, I think, on Parade Street, was that a cost to the town or to the school project? I'm just curious.
So that work was executed by Avondale Construction, and that's all part of the elementary school construction, from what I understand.
And I'm glad, that's the way I like to do things. What about just going around the corner, on the corner of Brunswick and Parade? There's some dirt there, or we need paving there. Also, who's gonna pave, or are we gonna pave Upper Grand Street?
That's all Avondale.
That's all Avondale, okay, that'll happen at the appropriate time. I'm curious also, when we do the, change the backdrop, backdrop to the monument on Water Street, Lost of the Sea Memorial, can I see sometimes, maybe, are we beyond the conceptual drawing stage and what it would look like, the parking lot and the backdrop to the Lost of the Sea Memorial?
Yeah, it's a good question, counselor. We're, we're still at the stage where we're not, we don't have a finalized IFC package for that, so I can definitely drop some conceptual drawings off for you. As I mentioned before, we're going with a two-tiered approach, so there'll be two levels instead of one extremely large retaining wall, so we cut that in half, and I think there's gonna be better vehicle mechanics because of it. We're gonna get about between two and three, well, not between, we're gonna get either two or three extra parking stalls out of that, just with doing a top tier for the top grade, and then a lower tier for the lower grade. They won't be interconnected, but there will be ways that a pedestrian can get out of their vehicle and get back up to Town Hall. But to answer your question, the retaining wall is still, they're still selecting materials for that, so we can get you some conceptual drawings for that.
Thank you very much. Love your reports, by the way, they're detailed and it's good reading. Thank you very much.
No problem, counselor.
So I always ask about the fire hall, I know, every month, but, but it says the schedule, overall schedule should still be maintained, so where, where's that? I just know it's important to get up and running, get volunteers, you know, that whole, whole thing, so where, what's the schedule in general?
Your worship, I had circulated a schedule among the fire hall staff, Dave Winship and John Louie as well, and so I can't remember the exact specifics, but the tendering would have been going out the last week of November, so I think we had a, we have about one week to two weeks of slippage in that schedule, but-
Okay.
In terms of the execution and getting it all done, I think that we can still meet the original commitment that I had circulated, and I can send you that, that schedule after.
Yeah, no, I don't need it. That's one last thing you have to do, Charles, you don't have to send me that. So-
If there were no, oh, sorry, go ahead, your worship.
I was just gonna ask, maybe you and Jeff can help on this, the wharf rehab. Did I miss something? The question is, I thought we were at a halt for various reasons, just wondered, yeah.
So there was, there's some dispute as to the suitability of the material that was placed, than just how it was placed.
Oh, okay.
And the construction contractor is of the mind that they met the spec, and the consultant engineers and myself are of the opinion that it didn't meet spec, so we're finding some way to resolve that, and we're also looking at the relative impact of, of the material that they did provide versus how much it would cost to go back in and replace that material. Essentially, they had the plan of bagging concrete, or I should say cement, and then as the tide comes up, the water interacts with the cement, and then it solidifies, and it's kind of interlocked or whatever, but we probably had about 50% of the bags hardened up, solidified, the rest remained as kind of a granular material. So the mass is still there, it's still holding it back, but it didn't harden up like we would like to have sort of a concrete blanket, if you will.
All right, okay. Good, and you were gonna share something there, Charles?
Yeah, I just wanted to give an update. I met with a business owner on Stars Road and Pleasant yesterday, and as you're probably aware, we had that, the engineering rolling for the multi-use trail down Stars Road connecting between Clements Ave, right-of-way, and the new multi-use trail we have on Pleasant Street, so it's a little bit of a difficulty there. If you look at the intersection between Pleasant and Stars, it's very difficult to resolve the grades and get a proper landing for the pedestrians, so without, without full support from the business owners, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tricky to execute that, that portion of multi-use trail, so the strategy moving forward might look something like we rebuild the intersection as we originally intended, and then maybe realign the multi-use trail in another interconnected way.
Question probably for Greg arising out of that. Why don't we just expropriate, why don't we just expropriate if we can't get cooperation from the business? I think we have the power to do it.
Certainly you do, yeah.
I mean, it's for public.
Expropriate land for municipal purposes, which it would be-
Absolutely.
Be questionable.
Why don't you tell them, why don't you, why don't somebody harp on these people, tell them, "Listen, if you don't cooperate, we're gonna do it." I'm just raising the issue. I mean, you want to be nice, be nice. Want to get it done? You want to get it done, get it done. What's more important, how much have you spent building it now? To give up on one recalcitrant business owner. I wouldn't do it. I'd tell them to, what I just said. I might tell them, if I was speaking to them directly, in a different way.
Well, I'm glad that you're not right now. I don't know if I got the strength to let you smack down. All right, CAO.
Right, so, so to date, we've been, and Charles has been leading, to meet with property owners, explain the project, and to reach, easily reach and inexpensively reach agreements, but to your point, counselor, we aren't without our, our tools that we can use to advance the project. We would discuss that with counsel prior to obviously starting that process, but, yeah, thank you for reminding us.
If I may just add something to that, there's a, one of the other complications with that is that they have entrances on either side of the intersection, and so it's, if you don't close those entrances and exits down, it significantly reduces the amount of area that the pedestrian can actually walk on a sidewalk, so there's just a complexity that's very difficult to resolve without closing off direct access to their parking lot, and so the, some of the owners were very apprehensive about shutting that down, and it's just from a vehicle maneuvering point of view, and the pedestrian conflicts with that, so it's, you know, it extends beyond the property, the property battle.
We're gonna terminate the trail. If pedestrian access is what's gonna, you know, if you're, if you, if they can't have pedestrian access across the driveway entrances, what's the point? We win. I'm gonna ask them dumb questions, all right?
Well, no, ask, like, ask, so we know.
No, but I mean, what is the point of doing the trail if we can't provide a proper cross, you know, when we come across the parking lot, or the access to the parking lot, rather, if we can't provide, and I think we can, a proper pedestrian marked, you know, so that pedestrians can safely walk over it and not expect to be, I mean, what do we do, what do we do with the Tim Hortons part? Has that been done yet? Not to single them out, but-
Jeff might not do it.
Other than the lineups on Stars Road, and I'm heading to Halifax, I kind of get away.
So, so the Tim Hortons entrances would be, would be treated exactly the same as Subway, but the Tim Hortons section is part of this, this phase that Charles is planning right now. And so we paint crosswalks across their, their entrances, and we continue across the grass islands. The, the complexity at the particular property we're referring to is it's right on the corner, it's an awkward corner anyway, and it's very narrow, and there's an in and an out very close to the intersection. So Charles had had, had worked with designers that had come up with a plan that would work, but it would move those access points away from, from that section and make it much safer for pedestrians. And to your point, there is no point in doing a trail if it's not gonna be safe and accessible for pedestrians. So in order to proceed with this project at all, we need to resolve the issue on that corner.
Thank you, that's all I have, your worship.
But are you good, Cliff? You're good? Okay. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Okay, anything else for Charles? Thank you. Finance. Jerry's not here, but we can ask him questions. When do we start our budget? When should we start our budget?
Yeah, three weeks ago. So, so what happens, usually in early January, Jerry begins the process of working with the directors to pull numbers together. You know, to be honest, it's, it's an ongoing process on the capital side, particularly, as well as the operational side, but in January, we'll, we'll be putting together the, the capital, the long list, and starting to get ready to bring that forward. That is, that is one of the first pieces that we, that we try to complete within the budget process so that we, we preserve the construction season for projects that are approved for next year. As you know, we've approved last year a, the one-year budget, but we had years two and three projected, so there, you shouldn't expect, I, well, let me, let me step back from that, from that thought. I was gonna say you shouldn't expect much change, but I'm gonna step back from that and say you might expect considerable change in the list, and, and I say that because of some of the, some of the processes and thoughts that Charles is bringing to the, to the situation, and, and so as I've expressed to him through this year, is reserve the right to, to advise us differently if you don't understand or, or, or agree with the rationale for any project that we have on the books. If you think there's something that's of higher priority, and that's what we depend on you to do, is to advise us, and so you may see some differences in terms of priority coming forward in this year's capital budget. You should see that, I'm thinking towards the end of January, maybe January, community, the whole, you know, as a, as a kind of target. We'll try and get that approved. First, we do the community grants, and then we get into the operational budget, which we always target for April and usually succeed in getting it approved in May.
All right, good. Thank you. Recreation. Frank. We good? Any questions for, for Frank? So Friday night is, Fri- this Friday is, are you going to that?
Oh, sports awards in, yeah.
Argyle?
Tuskegee, yeah.
Yes.
Friday night, athletic awards at our Eco Secondary de Parumbah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the mayor and our chair for recreation will be attending, helping us give out awards. Starts at seven.
Yeah, I think you go across the street there Thursday, worship. They have the opening of the Dr. Moses.
I'm going to be there as well. I am, I'm going to be there. I'm in, I'm in the city all day Thursday, Wednesday, Friday, but I'll be back for that and then I'll.
You'll be there for seven?
Come out. Yeah, that's a good reminder, I got to put that in, so.
Yeah, just an update, I don't know, it's probably late breaking and not in Frank's report, but Jerry and Greg Shea, the two directors of finance, will be getting together with Frank in the very near future to, to begin talking about a new way of funding recreation capital. You'll recall that earlier this year, we had discussion about Myllo Boat Club and perhaps the insufficiency of the, of the way that we've been funding capital in recreation. So should be a recommendation coming forward this winter on, on a new way of dealing with that.
And I, and I, I see nothing but positives in that. It was Jerry that recommended that last year after the budget process was, that maybe we remove that capital line from our budget and address it more for each council. That way they can have more autonomy in approving recreation projects, not only in their district, but more from a council perspective than going through recreation. So I think it would only be a positive thing. And, and I guess the, just a little bit of urgency as far as our meeting hopefully next week to discuss and start planning is that we want to make sure that we capitalize on any provincial grants moving forward on the Myllo project. And we have a deadline at the end of January to get grant applications in. So, so I'm hoping that we'll get together next week to start that discussion.
Yeah, and I think, your worship, I think since the last committee of the whole, myself and Frank, Neil Mackenzie and Misty were at the Nova Scotia Rec meetings in Oak Island. I think they're very informative and maybe just give a little overview of that, Frank, I think they went well.
Well, the, the theme of the conference is change. And I think from what I hear, I wasn't at the, the, I'm going to say UNSM, but I know it's not UNSM anymore.
NSFM.
NSFM.
As in non-sufficiently funded municipalities.
And.
NSFM.
From some of the discussions that I've had with people that were there, it seemed like the discussion topic at those meetings were changed on how, I guess our conference that I was at, the recreation world is changing. We're working more and more with other departments. We're getting more and more involved in other municipal topics and.
Because it's lifestyle, right? It's all part of.
Yep, society and communities.
It's not about baseball anymore, right?
Yep, it's a lot more, so it's good. It's 2018, we're moving forward.
Good stuff. Thank you, Frank. Are we good? Didn't even see it, Jim. Go ahead.
Frank, just an observation on the, all the, the lists of people who are being recognized Friday night. As Chair of the Induction Committee for the Sports Heritage Hall of Fame, which I know you're a member of and participate every year, somehow we should, they, you on Friday night should remember to say something like this. If someone's going to want to be recognized in the future, they should begin keeping it, their scrapbook. Whether it's the mother, the father, the brother, whatever, you know. It's, it makes it a whole lot easier. We're struggling to get nominations. And so that's a bit of a plug for the Sports Heritage Hall of Fame.
I was speaking with Glory Goodwin, past president of the Sports Heritage Hall of Fame. And we were lucky enough to have Bruce Rainey attend our recreation conference. And everyone knows that Bruce is now Executive Director for the Nova Scotia Hall, Sport Hall of Fame. And I mentioned to Bruce that it would be nice to maybe get Bruce down either as a guest speaker at the dinner or if that doesn't work out with the plans of the, of the Heritage Association, perhaps to get Bruce down for a session to work with members on the flow and the process and the selection process and the role of the committee and that sort of, just to, to use Bruce's expertise. You know, he's, he's a local person. And I mentioned it to Gloria and she was going to get right on it and give him a shout and, and so, yeah, so I, I think that's a, for sure.
Yeah.
Good. Anything else for Frank? Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Yes. Economic development, Ms. Natalie.
Thank you, your worship. If anyone has any questions on my report, I'd be happy to answer it.
Straight ahead for you. Okay, business sidewalk, Stars Road. Who's on that one? Are you on that? No problem?
Your worship, this is an item just to bring council up to date on, on a meeting you and I had had with the Arcadia First Nation and the District of Yarmouth. They invited you and I to a meeting earlier this fall to talk about a multi-use pedestrian, let's say sidewalk. I think that's what I referred to it in this, in this brief. But it could easily be and probably should be something akin to what we were just talking about on Stars Road, a multipurpose, non-motorized trail. So bicycles, walking, active transportation trail, I guess. So they'd already had some discussion, invited us to the table because their vision was to connect all the way from, from the Hayley Road down the airport stretch to, to Arcadia Corner. And roughly 2,000 feet of that, of that distance is within the town of Yarmouth. Then you're 350 feet to, within the District of Yarmouth before you reach the Arcadia First Nation. And then approximately 4,000 feet past the First Nation Reserve down to the Arcadia Rail Trail. And so we haven't priced out that project. It wasn't high on our priority list. And my suggestion is that, the recommendation is that we ask the, the engineer to come up with a, a budget estimate for the project. And once we know the order of magnitude of the project, then, you know, it can be considered in the, in the overall sidewalk priority list. And, and the reason I'm suggesting we go that far is that our, our neighbors are quite interested in the project. And I think it's fair to give them some level of understanding about where it fits and time, possible timeline with the town of Yarmouth. And so, so that is, that is the recommendation, that we go that far. And I'll stop talking and answer any questions.
Go ahead.
So, your worship, I, I reviewed the report or the concept. And my concern is this, that I, I think that has, it has merit, I really do. But people can be able to walk out to New York real conveniently.
Don't even get me going.
No, I want to be serious. Here's my concern. The proposal, as I see it, is to construct part of this with a gravel portion. I don't think we would be doing a gravel portion. I expect we would do something consistent with the kind of sidewalk trail construction we've been doing in town.
Yeah, we wouldn't even call it, it wouldn't be called a sidewalk.
Well, the gravel trail down through Sabogue, at least from the people that talked to me from Sabogue, and I have a few clients down that way, is not, not servicing them all that well, at least some of them say so. I don't think it would be appropriate, I think whatever they do, if they do it, if we do it and they do it, should be done to the same construction standard throughout. That's the point. I don't think we should do portions of it to one standard and portions to another. That would be something that I think they should, should be thought about as they go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
That, based on the recommendation that Jeff has presented to us, that the matter of the sidewalk connection continuing east on Stars Road to the town boundary be referred to the engineer for a budget estimate. And I just have one comment based, if someone was second.
Second.
Under, Jeff, under-desired outcomes. It says the assumption is that the town would be responsible for a hundred percent of the costs within the town limits. I can be a little bit uncomfortable with that. And it goes back to my whole philosophy of sharing with the, our sister municipality. And I, I want to proceed with that. It's good, it's good pedestrian way and, and it's so important. I'll make it one of my walks, once or twice, I'll go that way when it's finished. But I don't think that we, can't we share the overall costs? Not necessarily a hundred percent on our property we have to pay. Can't we just somehow find a way to share the overall cost because beneficial to Yarmouthians, whether they happen to live in town or out of town? So I'm not, I'm going to support the motion, but I, I want to, I don't want to pay for my share. I want them to help us pay for their share.
So I'll turn mine off. You want to give Jeff his?
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so I, I threw that in because that seemed to be the, the assumption that, that everyone in the room was, was sort of where their mind was. But it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. I think there is, there is opportunity for sharing. And as I say, when we get to the point of understanding what the cost is for 2,000 feet of that, plus there's likely to be storm sewer work that would be required. You know, when, when we know what the estimated cost is, I think that, and what the timeline is, then there's, there's opportunity to talk about how we're going to actually partner financially on this. I think that, you know, given that the initiative is coming from, from outside and yet only about 10% of the distance, a little more than that, 15% of the distance of the project is, is located outside, at least to get to the Arcadia First Nation. You know, I think there is opportunity in rationale to maybe have a discussion about some kind of a project cost-sharing deal.
C A O, what was the, what was the distance for, for Arcadia First Nation? I think you mentioned it earlier, I didn't catch.
No, I, I did mention it because I didn't measure it. I was thinking, when I, when I measured, I was first interested in, well, how much of this is in the town? And when I realized how much that was, I was, I was a little surprised, I didn't think it was that long. And then I realized how, how little was in the district to get to the First Nation property. And then I, because the other part was, was talked about from the Arcadia First Nation down to the trail, I measured that. And that was a significant difference, uh, distance, but I didn't.
So 4,000 feet is from Arcadia First Nation, which would be, I assume, from Pat's tire thing there where the old flying club used to be, down to the corner, that's two, that's 4,000 feet.
Right.
So councillor MacLeod, I would say that if this thing were to be constructed properly, you know, much more expensive than a gravel trail, to get the municipality onside, it would be fair for us to at least look at our 2,000 feet plus whatever it is for A F N. That's going to be 1,000, 2,000 feet?
I think it was that much.
Thousand at least, I would think. Right now, 2,000 and 4,000, we're to third. That's what, that's what I would say is I was, if I was out at the municipality. 2,000 and 4,000, we're to third of them. But you see, they're proposing to do a much cheaper version of this thing. And what I'm trying to say is that if it's a worth, if it's a worthwhile enough project, it's not unreasonable, in my view, on this one, that if they would agree to build it to the same standard that we would expect instead of a gravel trail, then it might be fair to look at it, that we're, we've got a fair share with them. I, I, I thought about that.
I'm good to go? Good. Thank you, your worship. Until like the last week, I haven't heard anybody ever ask me about an active transportation or a sidewalk going down to connect to the Arcadia Trail. But I've had numerous citizens still talk to me about the sidewalk from.
Hayley Road.
Hayley Road, Ellis Road, Hayley Road going across. So I think if it ever, I, I have no problem with the costing though because I think it's going to be an expensive proposition. But I still would put in my priority, and I think in the town's priority, it still would be that one across the Hayley Road. And if you ask anybody that lives in Rockville, Sand, Rockville, Sand Beach about the quality of the trail going down there now compared to what they're doing out in front of Arcadia School right now and on the Arcadia stretch, I think if you had the opportunity to do the consistency, what councillor Hood's talking about, I think that's what, that's a project that we'd want to be involved in. You know, that's a, that's, I think that's the most important part of the whole project is if you're going to build it, you might as well build it right and build it once, right? But I think this, for me, the, still the priority is across that Hayley Road in front of the, the church and connecting the, the ocean breezes to the rest of the community.
And so, so really, full disclosure, we did say that.
Yeah.
We said that right in the meeting.
And councillor, I think when they said the hundred percent, I think there's lots of opportunities. We've done it a couple of times with active transportation money applying to government agencies to fund some of our portion of that. So when they say a hundred percent, I think we still have lots of opportunity to apply to other government agencies to get funding.
Yeah.
But I have no problem with the cost, you know, just one more thing to throw on Charles's plate, right? So I have no problem with that.
So, yeah, okay. So a couple of things, what, what the councillor was saying. Number one, just, we want you to know that, Jeff, we did say that. We, we said, you know, this Hayley Road piece is, is priority for us.
And I actually had a talk with one of the hierarchy out at the church and they were, it's probably going to take more than that person that I talked to, but, but that situation that we talked about, Jeff, about the inside.
Inside, yeah.
They were good, right?
They would.
So if, if we ever had somebody go out there and talk to those guys on a preliminary basis, I think they were, that person was quite receptive.
Yeah. The, the other piece is exactly what both you and councillor Hood are saying is, is that we, we did say very clearly that from our standpoint, and I know Frank will, will agree with this, that, that building sidewalks on, especially on, you know, these arterial pieces and, and connective pieces were not, sidewalks just won't cut it anymore.
How about this one?
It has to be active transportation trails that everybody can, everybody can access, wide, walking, ATVs, bicycles. Yeah.
Maybe we should bring up to the municipality, your worship, is we finish a sidewalk on Region Street, just another 100 yards outside of town, hit it up, going up to the Ellis Road and start, ask those guys if they want to contribute for the sidewalk going from Ellis Road to.
Not ATVs.
Ellis Road right across.
Not ATVs, I take that back.
Not ATVs?
Not on our sidewalks, but I mean, those trails are.
They can put their truck right in the municipality and then go.
But it's, but, but to the point, like if we're going to do something like this, you do it right. And, yeah, exactly. Jim, I can't believe you haven't said the A word until now. Oh my God. So Jeff and then Cliff.
Yeah, just, yeah, sorry. You, you've mentioned that we identified that the Hayley Road project, the council's already requested pricing for that. And so we were very clear with them that, that from our point of view, council has another project in mind that's significant and going to be expensive and that we thought that this would probably come in later. And, and so we kind of set an expectation around that. I did go, go online and councillor Hood, the, the approximate distance across the Arcadia First Nation Reserve is about 1,250 feet. So it's a significant different distance in itself, so. So, you know, it is a fairly lengthy project from one end to the other. If it was all done, it would be very significant. It is part of our joint active transportation plan that we did a number of years ago. It was identified as one of the routes connecting to town, that people biking, walking, so on. Right now, on that stretch of, of road coming into town, it is not pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian-safe. And so, it was identified and, and, but this is the first activity on that project that we've, that we've heard, so, yeah.
I don't want to keep it going, but I think it's important. We have a motion on the floor, by the way, but I think it's important for us to understand, or me to understand at least, the Haley Road sidewalks' priority has been clearly laid out here, but it, it's not an active transportation route, is it? It's a regular sidewalk program, program. Whereas this project, if it were to go forward, would be another category, really. It's an active transportation with cost-sharing with various levels of government. It would be outside of our regular, mind you, the regular one is a budget issue that we have to contend with, and it does affect our decisions on this, but they are separate issues in terms of what we do. And we're going to have, if you do it, you're going to have driveways.
I'm going to let him respond to that.
Yeah, just, just, yeah, I, I do want to clarify on that one, although council did request costing out of a sidewalk. What we determined a few years back, and we can confirm this, is that building a standard sidewalk with concrete, or building the wider multipurpose trail is, with asphalt, approximately the same cost. And so, on arterial roads, like Haley Road, we would tend to lean towards the, the wide-paved multipurpose trail cross-section. If, if we can...
One...
Well, it, it would be, it would be considered part of our sidewalk budget, or, now, as far as opportunities for, for outside funding, there's somewhat limited, but there are opportunities for active transportation trails. So, on Stars Road, for instance, and on the Maude Lewis Trail, we've been successful in tapping into provincial funding, which might not have been available if we just called it a sidewalk and built it as a sidewalk.
I'd be surprised if they'd be funding little bits and pieces around sort of like that. Right now...
Wade, you're on.
Okay. It's been very interesting listening to this whole discussion. Sometimes I'm afraid that we are like the dog in that animated cartoon that's talking and all of a sudden goes, "Whirr!", and we head in another direction. I just want to, and again, as long as I've been reassured with the priorities that were discussed, but it does frighten me sometimes that we, we are very easily led in another direction sometimes when we have to keep our mind focused on the big picture. And I know you guys are good at the big picture when it comes to it, but we really do need those. And if, if, and I was about to turn off my mic and not say anything until Councillor Hood brought up the fact that they come from, they're, they're different projects altogether, and that, as far as it go, as far as it goes, that's fine, but let's make sure that our constituents are taken care of where it's really needed to first before we move on to the next one.
So, I just want to, before you turn your light, so you're good with the conversation?
I'm fine with the conversation.
You can see that we did say priority?
Yeah.
Where priority was, and this is just a cost thing because...
Mm-hmm. And that's fine.
Yeah.
And, you know, we should be ready for all of these as the opportunity comes up. I absolutely support active living, and if we can, if we can put accessibility in wherever, it's, it's important to me. So, we want to see as much of this done, but we do really need that, that piece up above, Councillor Mooney, as, as he brought up. So, thank you.
Yeah. And after it's costed, it goes into the...
It goes from there, yeah.
Yeah. Good. Thank you, councillor.
Question, Your Worship.
Yes, so question on the motion, we good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you, folks. Municipal Affairs, Fire Marshal's Office, Proposed Amendments. CAO.
Your Worship, there's a consultation period currently ongoing for proposed amendments to the National Building Code Regulations for Nova Scotia. The consultation period began October 31st, continues to December 14th. I asked our building official to review the proposed amendments, and I've attached a memo he wrote to me outlining the areas that are, that are being considered for change in this round of amendments. And so, I wish the province would put out such a, a clear and concise memo as our building official does. But anyway, though, that is his summary of, of what is contained in these, in these proposed regulation changes. And if you wish to, to provide feedback to the province, that's the purpose of providing this information to you. If you agree, disagree, or are indifferent, the information is there.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, I now can build my neighborhood of tiny homes? Great. Looking forward to that. Got the perfect spot, by the way.
All right. So, do you need anything from this, CAO?
Your Worship, I don't need anything. This is for your information. You do have a council meeting, still within this consultation period. Take this away, think about it. If you want to discuss it at the December council meeting, we can, we can take it up there.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Campaign to Protect Offshore, this is for action. Campaign to Protect Offshore Nova Scotia Request to Present. Have we had these folks before? I think we have.
We had the opposite one, too.
So, Your Worship, this is a request to present. I don't know that we've had these people present.
No, I see we, yeah, it's a different group.
So, our policy is, is that they're to send us the information and allow us the opportunity to make an informed decision. But if we feel that we want to have them present to, to advise council, to inform council more, then this is your opportunity to accept their request and to have them present at a future meeting.
I'll make a motion. Your Worship, we invite the connects available. Tom.
You do? Okay. Go ahead, CL.
There's already a local group that's very active on this topic.
Yes.
From Shelburne and the Western Counties area. This is just another group that probably have to do these things to keep their paycheck coming in from whoever's funding them. We've heard this. We're aware of it. And why do we have to listen to another take on the same old story? Sorry. I was on Sable Island the first, the first day they drilled, working in 1968, '07. We haven't had an oil spill on Sable Island in all the years, or around there since, that made, that hurt anybody. This activity right now that's going on offshore Nova Scotia, if they were to have one, God forbid, it's all going to end up in, it's going to end up in the middle of the ocean and across, maybe if it ever survived long enough, little bits and pieces and stuff in Ireland, or England, or Norway, or some damn place, wherever the... Sometimes, you know, every fishing boat being constructed around here is made out of something that comes out of the ground called oil. Our cars, every one of them, are constructed today, about a third of them boil.
What is?
So, what do we say? No oil? No oil? No oil? Are, are we prepared to say that? I don't think so. Anyway, far, far as I'm concerned, bring them in, but I consider it a waste of time. They might get some hard questions from me.
Perfect. Perfect. Perfect.
Yeah. We need hard questions.
Question, Your Worship.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
I'm on it.
Town of Shelburne Dispatch Services. Go ahead, CAO.
Your Worship, you have a letter of the Mayor of Shelburne. They've recently experienced some change in their dispatch provider, and I believe Mayor Matatal is, is calling on the Deputy Minister of Municipal Affairs to take some initiative, to have a standard central dispatch to help improve efficiency for fire services across the province. This is consistent with what the Nova Scotia Fire Services Association, I think I got that right, have also written to the minister and asked that, that he act on, and Mayor Matatal has, has copied us, and I expect is looking for some support on that request, and so that is for your consideration.
So, the Firefighters Association passed that unanimously, didn't they? I just, I just want folks to understand that.
They passed it unanimously.
Have a seat, Chief. Have a seat, Chief. Go, go ahead. No, that's all right. I just love that. I love that.
F.S.A.N.S., the Fire Service Association of Nova Scotia, had a conference, and at that conference, this, this issue was brought up, and they talked about a central dispatch. And that was voted on at that meeting, and it was unanimous.
Yes.
There was no nays. So, it, it's just to prompt the government to go forward on the dispatch issue.
Okay. It's, yeah, go ahead. Careful, careful.
Chief, on that, what was the date of that meeting?
I, I was just trying to think of that. I can't remember the exact, exact date, but it was, it was...
Late spring, early...
Yeah, it would, it would be summer. It would be summer.
Were any of the fire chiefs from Yarmouth County present?
Uh, yes, there was a number of them.
And the, and the meeting was unanimous that we go to a centralized dispatch for firefighting?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chief.
Whoa, whoa, wait.
Not for you. It's okay.
Go ahead, Wade.
Well, I just want to say that this is something we discussed, we've discussed at length before among ourselves, just as a, as a safety concept, and something that we all kind of feel that fairly strongly about, I believe. So, certainly if she's looking for some sort of support to push for a central dispatch, that we should be behind her in that particular aspect.
Make your motion, councillor.
I'd make that motion, no problem.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Get that out for...
So...
You may have with your light, only with your light on if you...
Do we support being doors on the outside?
In other words, we want to join with Shelburne in...
Yeah.
Representing to the minister this should happen?
Yes.
So, that's what your motion was, wasn't it?
Steve?
Yeah, good. Okay. Want to get your light there? All right. 9A. We're on, under additions, military, if I can find this here. So, Deputy, you're gonna, you're gonna help me walk through this one. But basically, what just happened recently is the military, Canadian military reached out. They are looking at Yarmouth. I think we've already confirmed that Yarmouth will be the site of, of an operation that's done throughout, throughout Canada. And, and basically, just that they don't want to go into other countries and not be prepared. So, if I just, just give me a second here. They just did this in P.E.I., for example, bringing in, bringing in the troops. Soldiers will complete, this is the P.E.I. one, soldiers will complete a dozen construction and renovation projects as part of hands-on training. There'll be no shortage of skilled labor on P.E.I. in November. They're still there, actually. Approximately 450 Canadian Armed Forces engineers are descending on the island where they'll be tackling a dozen different construction and renovation projects. The last thing the Army wants these people to have is a skill fade. What these projects give soldiers the opportunity to do is get hands-on technical training with challenging projects. So, the groups that are coming in, it was, oh, my gosh. But the groups that are coming in are the ones that would go in, in times of war and other, go into countries and make sure everything's cleared and things are set up for the rest of the troops to come in, and so they practice things. So, we've, we've reached out to, basically, our Todd is, is leading some of this, certainly, looking for those projects within the community. It has to be a nonprofit, you know, or government, those types of things, and looking for a list of 25 projects. I, the last I spoke with Todd, he had quite a number of those compiled. They will come in, they will set up in a spot, because we've, we're also looking for that piece of property where they can set up camp and, and then carry out there. So, there'll be hundreds of them here doing projects. They're in and out, I think, Phil, four to six weeks. And, and off they go. So, so it can't be overstated, the tremendous benefit to this community. Frank, maybe trails, bridges to, you know, anything like that. So, I think everyone's talking to Todd. He's reaching out to everybody.
Yeah, and I talked to Todd earlier this morning, Your Worship, like you said, it's nonprofit organizations and municipal units. I think they did a job on a trail system in P.E.I. They also did a Boys and Girls Club, a complete renovation of a basement for them. It's not, it's, they, they will do the engineering and they will do the labor, but the organization still has to come up with their, their part of the funding. So, I talked to Todd today. He's spoken with Frank, he's spoken with Gil at the Mariner Center, Donnie McCumber from the Legion, he's also talked to, I guess, Deanna Noss, who's with the Trails Association. He's talked to Shift House. He's also talked to Lloyd McDougall at Acadian First Nation. They're all interested and on board, so like you said, there's 25 projects. They'll do about 12 of those. They look at them, they'll do all the engineering specs, they'll do about 12 projects. And the reason they looked up to 25 is the scope or the capacity that they have. And some organizations might not get the funding that they applied for, or might not have the funding, or the project might have been bigger than what they thought. So, they have more in the queue and more in the list. And he also stated, I think, with the, it's going to be about 400 or 450 that'll be on-site, and then on the weekend, that swells to 600 or more.
Yes.
Be because there's other regiments across the province and across the line of Canada that come in on a weekend basis. So, it's a massive undertaking. It's a great opportunity for some nonprofit organizations to, to tap into this, and it's not only just Yarmouth, or the municipality, or Argyle, or Yarmouth County, they're going as far down, I think, an hour each way.
Yeah.
So, you could almost go to Digby one way and almost go to Shelburne the other way. But they will be laying down close to, hopefully, they might have a spot in Yarmouth, and we'll have close to 600 people here for several weeks, right? So, that means they'll be buying equipment, they'll be buying building supplies and all the other things right here in our community. So, hopefully, it, it goes really well. The date, I think it is in October, I think, Don, late October?
Yeah, they moved it, they moved it up.
They moved it up a little bit, because it wasn't in November. Those guys were leaving on that really bad day a couple of weeks ago, going back to P.E.I. to finish, finish some work.
Yes.
But I think they've moved it up a little bit, Don, so it's going to be in, I think, middle of October, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And they're here for quite a few weeks.
Yeah. They have four, four to six weeks.
I don't think I missed anything, so if anybody...
I don't think I did.
They can contact Todd Muse, and Todd can point them in the right direction.
Yep. Good staff. Pretty, pretty excited about that. EMO update. That would be...
Go ahead, Jeff. That's the best minutes, the best minutes I ever saw.
It's, thank you.
You told, you let him take minutes?
So, so, on Monday evening, the, our EMO executive for the District of Yarmouth and the Town of Yarmouth met with the EMO executive for Argyle, and our two emergency management coordinators, our, our acting coordinator and their coordinator, gave a presentation on REMO, so Regional Emergency Management Planning, or Organization. And we've, we've talked about this, and we're, we're all kind of interested in it. So, what they did is they, they talked about sort of the why and the how that you would do this, and, and obviously, the, the why, and one thing that we've seen over the, over the years, is that there's a lot of duplication of, of resources required to... is that there's a lot of duplication of resources required to set up an emergency response center in Argyle and in Yarmouth. And if we had one emergency response center in the case of an emergency, it would perhaps be more efficient. So, we get that. And so, we are interested, and given that we are sort of in between emergency management coordinators, it's perhaps an opportune time for us to have that discussion. So, Janine and Max Stuhlberger provided us with a sample of a typical municipal agreement. I think they used the one from Lunenburg County as kind of how the terms and conditions of these things typically look. They've given us samples of bylaws, because we would have to amend our emergency management bylaw in order to accommodate this, not a major deal. And we would, we've undertaken that we, the CAOs, will do some work on sort of what a combined budget, a few scenarios of what a combined budget might look like. Rhonda Matthews was present, she is the regional provincial person for EMO presently in our area. Steve Mills has retired. And so, she offered a bit of information, and that particularly was that in most areas of the province, they do have these REMOs now in place. They don't, they don't do single or two municipalities, they kind of organize by county or REMO. So, she was supportive of the initiative and thought, you know, if there's anything that she could offer, more than willing to do so. So, I think the direction, I don't think, I know the direction coming out of the meeting was that the CAOs were to, were to look at the bylaws, look at the agreement, look at potential budget, and bring back to the group. I think we, there was kind of a consensus, we want to get this done fairly quickly. Now, since the meeting, I can tell you that there's been some thought about maybe we shouldn't think about inviting Barrington to the table. Now, maybe there's some additional synergy there, that we haven't had any in-depth discussion internally about that, nor have we talked to Barrington much about that, so...
Did they said Jeff, or Barrington, is they had a lot across all nation with the drought from this year in 2016, I guess?
Yeah, they're certainly, you know, in the case of the drought, they're, you know, the issues are in common, and again, having fewer resources doing the coordinating and more resources doing the fixing is kind of the idea, right? Let's not tie up a bunch of people in meeting rooms when they need to be out providing service. The complexity with Barrington is that some of, they are in other ways aligned with the rest of Shelburne County, and so some of their service providers wouldn't be exactly the same service providers as we have, they would be other service providers. That, you know, I don't know how significant that is in the big scheme of things, and I don't know what their level of interest is. Just to make you aware, the discussion might be a little broader than Yarmouth County. But in any case, we're going to try and advance this work as quickly as possible with a mind of having a decision in front of you early in the new year, would be my hope. So, there is, there is one, excuse me, one thing to, just to be aware of. In, under our current situation, in order to declare a state of emergency, there are some responsibilities that come directly back to this table, to the council table. Under a REMO, that is typically not the case. And so, you are empowering this board, this joint board, to make those kinds of decisions. And this council has less of a collective role around the actual mechanics of the emergency. So, you would be, my take is that you would be, in your typical role, you would be communicating with people in the community, you would be hearing about issues as people will be calling you, they're used to calling you when they have issues. And so, we would be looking to create a communication link, particularly myself and you, so that, so that we're able to address, identify and address the issues as they arise at the citizen level while handling an emergency.
Good. Communities in Bloom. Oh, I didn't see the light. Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead, if you got a question, I seen your light.
The mayor is empowered, is the only person empowered to declare an emergency under the Act? It's council.
Yeah, I would call council in and...
No, that's good, I, I'm good.
Good. Want to, Wade?
Okay.
Want to turn your light on, I'll turn it back on, then you... Okay, go ahead, turn her on again. I just want to get you on the, it's hard to watch when I pan, okay? So, you're on for Communities in Bloom.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Couple of things that came out during our last Communities in Bloom meeting. And one of which is, I think is a really great idea. As you know, in the springtime, right around Earth Day, there is an Adopt a Block program in order to clean up litter isn't an issue. It's an issue everywhere, of course, but it's an issue here. And what's happening, of course, and it came during the course of discussion about the National Symposium, which we will be hosting next September, the end of September, that perhaps right around that time would be a good time to do something similar, a cleanup. And actually, I grabbed hold of it for the thought that, yeah, it's fine to clean up for the actual convention which is coming. It's kind of important, especially considering that it's communities in Bloom, these are people who care about such things, but it's good for us as well. I'd like, overall, to kind of create an atmosphere where, and I know we all think that littering is frowned on, but we see so many people do it without a second thought. And I'd love to see it become more of a taboo anyway. So, not so much just for the fact that there is a, an actual symposium which is coming up in the fall next year, but I would like to see some kind of a similar program as what we do in the spring. An Adopt a Block kind of program, perhaps, get some local businesses involved to take part in it. I don't think it would be very much of a strain on us as far as budgeting goes, if it's much of a strain at all. But I would like to see some kind of an initiative done every fall, not a fall cleanup the way that, you know, the... Yeah, that kind of thing, but a cleanup of garbage. We have garbage, and it seems to be an endless thing. You know, you see the school kids go out in the springtime and pick up bags and bags and bags and bags and bags of garbage, and think, there, you've made some progress. And then the next year rolls around, and the same kids go out and pick up bags and bags and bags and bags, so nothing really changes, other than the fact that somebody is picking up after somebody else. I'd like to see one in the fall, and I'd like to see us maybe to increase the amount of, I don't know if we do it on social media or what, the creation of a negative vibe for those who litter, and I know it becomes a nagging thing, but it's an issue, it's a problem that we have, and I think it reflects back to spirit in the town, the community pride. So, that's my first.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, and I talked to, I talked to Todd just before Wade came in today, and he's looking at about, remember, Jeff, when Waste Check used to do the Adopt a Kilometer? And I think they paid like $250 or $300 a kilometer, I think. I talked to Todd this morning, he thought maybe he could do wonders with eight kilometers, so that'd be about $2,000, I guess. So, you could get that out to community groups and nonprofit organizations. We did it, remember, we did it a couple of years after Waste Check stopped it, we did it through... Yeah, we did it through Communities in Bloom, it kind of just went by the wayside. But I think they wanted, and just, I don't, I'm not going to say echo what Wade said, but I know how much you love that word. Okay. I think they were concerned around the Communities in Bloom table about, they just wanted some extra care. I know everybody does their job, and I know you get Cheryl Burchels and all the other people out there doing all the collections, but I think Todd was looking at $2,000. So, maybe if councilor referred, yeah, make that motion, refer to budget, and we can look at it then.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
And I know Waste Check will be involved, and I'll talk to the people at Divert, and maybe they'll, may be able to throw in a small amount of money also.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carry.
Okay, second thing. Second thing is something that came up about the asset donation plans that we have, the asset donations, which are wonderful, it's a wonderful project. But it was pointed out by someone that if somebody wants more information on it, that it is, basically what they get is a paper that's a bit, it's a policy, it's very dry. And someone mentioned it was confusing. Now, I have no idea, I was, I have a copy of it in my bag here, but I haven't had a chance to read it to see if it confused me or not. But at any rate, I do believe that it's a wonderful program that needs more attention put to it. And again, I go back to social media and that kind of thing. But also, and this is my suggestion, I wonder if you could get staff to perhaps take a look at the possibility of some kind of an asset donation program pamphlet? That would be very, very simple, that would kind of line what's available, what could be done, that you could just hand out a pamphlet to somebody and say, here, this is what you can do, this is how it works, this is where you put the money, that kind of thing. Something very simple, very visual, if you'd be interested in taking a look at that.
Your Worship, there is on our website, there is a link to the community donation programs. And if you go to under Community, there's a Community Donation Programs link. There's a page there that links directly to a guide for the program. And it's probably not as dry as the paper that the counselor has received, although close. It, I guess, what I'm looking at has pictures of samples of the kinds of things you can donate for. It's not just the policy statement, but gives you some idea. But I do, I do take the counselor's comments and understand where he's going. So, we have currently a competition out for a communications officer, and we will add this to the, to the list of projects for the communications officer. To, I mean, this is the kind of thing, and we've got a, you know, it's easy to make a list of 10 or 15 things every day that we could be communicating more effectively to the public on. Current, you know, ongoing activities, issues, I know your winter parking ban would be, would be kind of a timely one right now, and everything around the holidays and so on. So, we will add this to the list, and hopefully, help to accelerate the rate of donation and certainly increase the level of awareness.
Good. All right. Dog bylaw, who added that?
Your Worship, I had a call from residents of Elm Street. And I think it's okay for me to name one of the people affected by this, former counselor Doug Mosley. Actually, Mrs. Mosley called me originally to complain about a longstanding issue with dog in their neighborhood. I talked with Doug at some considerable length, and he told me about his history with this animal, which is a German shepherd. Several neighbors are having difficulties, not just the barking. And in fact, Doug told me that last summer, the dog got off the leash and bolted into his yard and ended up getting on top, and actually to the point where he was scratched and physically assaulted. The SPCA, who is tasked with looking after dog bylaw enforcement on dogs in town, has responded. And based on what Doug tells me, I won't quint all the details. I, I think that the residents that are affected in this situation have some questions about the training and effectiveness of the people who are doing the dog bylaw enforcement on our behalf. From what was described to me, this should not be continuing. And there was one, at one time, they did come, and there was no one home at the place, and they took, there's two dogs there, and they took both dogs and kept them for part of the day. And then when the owner came home, they returned them to him. But, so the dog occasionally is off-leash and does these things, but it's the barking and so on and the rest. But really, the response, the description of the response by the enforcement people led Mr. Mosley for sure, and I think others that are affected in that area, with the impression that enforcement people are really not 100% up to scruff on what their powers and abilities are on this thing. So, I don't know how to question that, but I assume we could get somebody in from the SPCA, and we could ask them some questions about how they go about it, and what training they give the people that are doing the job. And I make a motion that we do that.
Okay, CAO?
Just for clarification, are you asking that they, they meet with myself or staff and to get that information for you?
I prefer that, yes.
Okay. And can you share with me the address of the...
I have some notes at home, and I can give you names, addresses, and times.
Okay.
They did complain to the town, and the town referred it to the SPCA. And frankly, the citizens think the response has not been adequate and effective. And I did, until I learned from Mr. Mosley that in fact, it'd been a physical altercation between himself and this German shepherd, which caused him physical injury. When I learned that, I thought I'd bring it up at council. Only reason, I, look, noise bylaw, dog bylaw, you know, sometimes we have, we all get affected by it. But when I found out there was a physical injury, I don't think there was an adequate response to that.
So, Your Worship, so Your Worship, what I would do is...
Not shoot the damn thing.
Is approach this, approach this from two perspectives. One is the specific incident and how that was handled, and understand that, and report back to council. But I would also, and to the citizen. And the other is the more general question about the training and qualifications of the people who are providing the service under that contract.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carry. So, this is, this won't be specific just to that incident, right?
It'll be both.
Yeah.
It's mostly a general thing.
Yes.
I mean, the incident has happened or not, but I think it would be important for us to look at this and let the citizens know the fact that they're doing what we can to try to address.
Right on.
The perception in their part.
Right on.
So...
You good? Go ahead.
I just, I just want to comment on that a little more, because I just, history for council that weren't, that weren't at the table at the time. We did have a horrific dog attack in the community a number of years ago. And at that time, the SPCA was our provider of service, and we moved away from them for a few years, because at that time, the service was not up to snuff. Now, they came back to us, and we have re-contracted the service to them on the understanding that they had upped their game and that their, their response was, was not going to be what it was back then. So, this is, you know, I'll take this seriously, that there's a concern about the level of service, and I'm sure they'll take it seriously too. I will report back to council on, on both the specific incident and the response, but also the level of qualification experience that the enforcement officers have.
Okay, good. Additions are done, anything in camera? Yeah, let's go ahead. Okay, can I have a motion to go on camera? Hey.